The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education for March 9th, 2020, to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Davenport should be so kind as to lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of special presentations this evening, so I'm going to let Mr. LaPage take care of that.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening from the Canton Board of Education. Is that correct? She is here tonight to present our Board of Education with some very distinguished awards from CAPE. And I'll turn the microphone over to her to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent LaPage. Good evening to everybody and to the members of the Plainville Board of Education. My name is Julie Osere, and I am here tonight on behalf of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, also known as CAPE, to recognize the efforts of the Plainville Community Schools and to present you with these awards. In order to receive the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, the entries must meet all of the following criteria. First, it is the general criteria, which includes the clarity of message, image, and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines of readability, editing, graphics, type, format, presentation, design, and value of expenditure. I am very happy tonight to present the Plainville Community Schools with four Awards of Excellence for Educational Communication. They are the Going Green, for the annual report for the Plainville Community Schools Business Brief, the Course Selection Guide for the Plainville Adult and Continuing Education Program Guide, and the Special Project Award for the Plainville Plate Cookbook. Each of these entries submitted highlights not just good communications, but creative thinking and a collaborative spirit with the Plainville community. CAPE has been honoring school districts with the Award of Excellence of Educational Communication since 1975. In 2016, the award was renamed in honor of longtime CAPE staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her 47 years of dedication to education focused on communications. With this award, CAPE's goal is to identify and honor the hard-working people in the school districts for their continuing effort to communicate effectively. And on behalf of CAPE, I wish you congratulations. So here are the awards. Please pour claps.
I'll take the picture. I'll take the line. You should be in the picture. Crystal. Thank you. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that, and our board does a tremendous job. And I want to acknowledge Lynn Davis for all the amazing work she does in supporting these awards and these submissions of these awards, I should say, and always does a tremendous job as community relations in making sure that the board that works so hard on this Board of Education Appreciation Month is so duly acknowledged for their hard work and dedication. The next part of our evening is a high point of each meeting. It's a chance for us to acknowledge and pay tribute to someone in our community who we consider to be an everyday hero. These everyday heroes are nominated by members of our staff, sometimes by students or both, and sometimes by family members. This month, we had three people nominate this individual for an Everyday Hero Award, and couldn't be happier to award this Everyday Hero Award to a wonderful library media specialist at our middle school, Plainville, Joyce West. And I'm just going to share with you the words that were shared with me about Joyce from her colleagues first, Melinda Beuth and Allison Rogers, who said, "Joyce is an incredible and invaluable member of the MSP faculty. She goes above and beyond in everything she does. She's so incredibly passionate about reading and instills this love in everyone at MSP." For example, Joyce is leading the charge in giving back to the community right now via the Read and Feed Initiative. She is very motivated to support the superintendent's goal to increase reading among our students while helping out the Plainville Community Food Pantry. As social studies teachers, she's always there to help us out whenever we need it: resources, ideas, research, et cetera. We are so lucky to have her at MSP and feel strongly that she is deserving of this recognition." And then also from nominated by Joanne Petrowski, hope I said it right. "Joyce always goes the extra mile when it comes to the students. Whether it is teaching or ordering books, she will stop at nothing to make sure the students have what they need. I've worked with Joyce since September 2019, but in that short time, I've seen her go out of her way to make sure our library has books students were looking for, and if not, she made sure we got them. She's always there for students when they need assistance, going to the classrooms to work one-on-one and in small groups to ensure they understand the topic at hand. Overall, Joyce makes the students here at MSP her priority, and it shows." I'd like to add just personal reflections. Joyce has been tremendous during the Super Reading and Math Challenge across the district, really supporting that and getting a lot of excitement. I was over there for Read Across America Day last week and reading to a group of middle school students along with many of you. And just the excitement, the assortment of books, and the options that students have to really learn to love reading is tremendous. I do want to also report that as of March 5th, through our partnership with the, I always want to say Bristol Press? I did it wrong again. New Britain Herald, I'm sorry, who is providing a dollar for every book read by our middle school students and middle and high school students. We had sixth grade has read 320 books so far, with one student has already read 32 books, one read 21, a couple have read 16 books each. Grade seven, 176 total books, and grade eight has a total of 310 total books for a total at MSP of 806 books. So they're already more than halfway to the goal of the maximum of, was it $1,600 that New Britain Herald is willing to donate to our food pantry. And Joyce has been a large leader of that program. So thank you, Joyce. Congratulations on being an everyday hero, and thanks for all you do. Come on up.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And that concludes the special presentations.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you. Congratulations to our honorees. We are going to move on to approval of minutes. So we have the minutes from the last February 10th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move we accept the minutes of the meeting of February 10th, 2020, a regular business bidding of the Plainville Board of Education.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections or concerns? All right. Hearing none. All affirmative vote aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right. Thank you very much. We have come to citizens' comments. We understand that there are some issues going on within the community that have brought a lot of folks here. And before we actually open up to citizens' comments, we're going to ask the town manager and Robert Lee and Chief Catania to come up and address the group here. So if you would be so kind to do so, gentlemen. And I would like to thank the town manager and the council for putting off their meeting for this evening so that they were able to come here with us.
Thank you very much. I'd like to read a statement, make a few comments, and take it from there if possible. On Friday, March 6th, 2020, during the early morning hours, Plainville Police Department detectives assisted investigators from the Department of Homeland Security to execute a federal search and seizure warrant at 109 Northwest Drive in Plainville. Evidence gathered as a result of the search and the investigation revealed that the homeowner, 49-year-old Kyle Fassoul, had been secretly recording young girls in various stages of undress at his home and in a women's locker room at Plainville High School. As of this date, the evidence shows that the recordings at the Plainville High School likely began in May of 2018. Mr. Fassoul was arrested and taken into account later in the day by the Homeland Security Investigators on charges related to the production of child pornography. He is still in custody. According to the Homeland Security Investigators, it is believed that some of these recordings were taken of current and past members of the Plainville Blue Dolphin Swim Team. We are currently working with investigators to try to identify the young girls Mr. Fassoul is suspected of recording so that proper notification can be made to their families. Though limited information can be released regarding the active federal investigation, inquiries can be directed to Chief Matthew Catania. When we became aware of this on Friday, we met with the superintendent of schools, and information has been being developed through the weekend and even as late as today. In cooperation with Steve LaPage, we are here this evening, and we've made arrangements to secure a separate room from here. Any parents who would like to join us and have further discussions about this particular situation, we'll try to answer your questions and address your concerns. You're certainly welcome to stay here and stay for citizens' comments, but we're going to make ourselves available in a separate room and have perhaps more discussion that, you know, maybe in some people's instances, you know, information that people may not feel comfortable about discussing publicly. But again, it's a volunteer. We're making ourselves available, and if you'd like to take advantage of that, please join us. And depending on how many people join us, will depend on whether we're in a smaller room or a larger room. So that's all that we have to say at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. So what we have is for you are two different options. You may stay and come to the podium and make a statement or ask, you know, talk with the Board of Education. You'll have to give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Or you may also go and have a conversation with the town manager and Chief Catania. So we'll give everybody a moment. Anyone who would like to speak to the Board of Education can come up to the podium, and as I said, state your name and address. One more time, would anyone like to speak to the Board of Education? And I will do it one-third and one more time. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Education, please come up to the podium. Okay. All right. That moves us beyond that point to council liaison. I know Ms. Puglisi told me that she really didn't have a report this evening. The only thing that she wanted to report was that they are working on their budget and are beginning their budget meetings. So that leads us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Tyrell. This evening, we have two scheduled updates and reports. The first is from our own Kevin Ross, Director of Technology, who's going to give us our annual technology update with all the work that he's been doing for the district. Mr. Ross, let me know if you have problems with the technology. I can help you out. Not really.
One second. All right. Thank you for having me. It's been a few years, actually, since I presented the board. Actually, it was in 2017 the last time I actually gave the State of Technology. In previous years, we had talked about a lot of what we were going to do, but now that we've moved to kind of capital, a lot of that gets front-loaded, so you guys hear the same spiel so many times. So we're not going to talk about anything that we're purchasing for next year or looking to purchase, but we're going to kind of talk about my staff and some of the accomplishments we've had over the last few years. And we're going to talk a little bit about one-to-one and the cost. Just the one thing I will be talking about, comparing it to what it would have been if we continued the same model we had. So it's just something I want you to just be clear. It's just kind of a broad overview of it. So first, do want to talk about the help desk. This is my staff. From July to now, we average about 3,000 tickets, about 17-plus tickets a day that we handle. We try to keep our system in the low teens. Most of our staff, if they put a ticket in, have a response that day. Pretty proud of that. You know, there are some people who won't use the ticket system, and then they finally do. They're like, wow, that was so quick. I should have done that years ago. And I'm like, yeah. So as you can look at the ticket system here, you can see the number of tickets per school. You see the high school and middle school take up a good portion of it. A lot of that's just Chromebook-related repairs and things like that. The Linden Street and the elementaries are there, and then Central Office and other being mostly the town, pretty equal, about 20% or 10%. So this doesn't happen by myself. I have a staff that I lean on, and it starts with Carol Zettergren, who many of you know, who's been in the district 28 years. She was an office professional at the middle school before I was lucky enough to steal it. That's right. For the greater good of Plainville, she supports all of the schools. Maybe people can tell you that. She does the, she's the data integration assistant, but her main job is supporting our central, our office staff. She trains all the staff when we hire new people. She also does a lot of the Power School reporting. She does scheduling for the high school. She helps the elementary school with their scheduling. Middle school staff does do theirs, so that's helpful. But she does a lot of the high-end reporting that people need, transcripts and stuff like that for her schools and running all of that. Along with her, we have Mark Alfano, who is the District Data Integration Specialist. Mark's job is to build these systems that we use. He helps maintain Power School and Performance Tracker. Right now, is this tool we use to analyze student data, and we're looking at a new product because that product has been retired, and we're moving forward, and his job is to bring those forward, along with like surveys and things like that. So he deals with all of that data integration. Next is Dan Demer. Dan has been with us for 11 years, you can see. He's the network manager. Dan is the guy who makes things go, all right? He's the one who's been instrumental with me to building the networks, maintaining the network, maintaining the servers, and from the town and the schools. He knows more about the police systems than any of the other IT staff, right down to loading the computers in the cars and things. So next, we have Doug Miller. Doug is another, both Dan and Doug are both Plainville grads. Doug is the lead technician. His job is to kind of keep track of the day-to-day tickets and keep the other two technicians moving in morning meetings. They kind of decide what's going on, who's going where. Next, we have Nick Midolo and John Wazakowski. They've been here, Nick's been here six years, and John is a little less than a year, but he has six years' experience in the Burlington School System. So he was a good find this year. We did lose one person, John Deera, who left to go to Southington, and we decided at this point, we'll see if it works, that we can get by, hoping to bolster some salaries with his position, and so we'll see how that goes. So over the weekend, we had the VEX competition, and Dan and I met with them last week, and this was a great email. And we get these kinds of accolades a lot, and I'm quite proud of it. Mr. LaPage always says we're the greatest IT staff. I thank him for saying that. I don't know if true it is, but I do thank him for it. But we got this today, and then from Miss Sternberg, is that her name?
Betty Sternberg.
When we worked with them and their staff a few weeks ago, a lot of thanks for the work we did. So quite proud of that. Anyone go to the VEX competition this weekend? Yeah. How'd we do?
They actually, the middle school, did get a couple of awards. Unfortunately, we had one middle school student who was in first place almost, or was the whole day, and then in the final competition, found that unfortunately, he lost.
Knocked out.
But it was an amazing event.
Good. And the space, I think they spread it out well, so it worked out. All right. So now we're going to talk about one-to-one. We'll walk down memory lane. So before we started the, about six years ago, before we started the one-to-one, this is the kind of the breakdown, what students had access to for computers. It's kind of keeping it at students. We still need laptops for teachers. We still need servers. We still need infrastructure. We still need, we still buy iPads for certain areas, but this is comparing the computers that students would use to the Chromebooks and labs today. So before we did, we had eight computer labs in this building, and we had five carts of laptops. The cost for those would cross the box of maybe $390,000 to replace or to purchase today. That's about $1,200 a laptop and about $1,000 a laptop. Today, we have three purpose-built labs: COM for the communication, that's Dave Gagnar's lab, the CAD lab, which is Mark's, you know, STEM lab, and then the art lab is the art department's Photoshop and digital art that they do. From there, we have 710 approximate students at $225 per Chromebook. So when you compare the costs of about $258,000 to $390,000, there's a savings of about $131,000 just on those devices. Moving on to the middle school, who had even fewer devices, we had four computer labs, two general-use labs, 201 and 302. We had 511, which was the STEM lab, and 515, which was another lab Mrs. Westfall used. We're down, and then we had four carts of 30 laptops there that cost about $240,000. We now have 625 devices. We dropped one lab to just the STEM, the music lab, and then the robotics lab. And then every student, one-to-one, about 550 students at $225 per. The savings total between the two, a difference of $26,000. We moved to the elementaries. We had a lot of laptop carts, and these, again, a lot of this, if you've heard me over the years, and some of you have been here long enough, heard my presentations, I kept saying that it's going to be very hard to fill the hardware bubble that we had because of the building projects. And that's what this went six years ago, really helped us with one-to-one, because we had Linden and Tofflon in the high school get all of this technology, and we never had the capital budgets or even the operating budgets to do that. This is very obvious here. We had three computer labs. We had 15 carts of computers, almost one per grade level. They were sort of shared, about five per school. I mean, Matt could probably, I mean, Andrew maybe can remember, and Lynn, all the carts that used to be in the labs and rolled around and banging into walls and the keys falling off, and, you know, it's difficult to maintain those. So the cost for those labs and carts was $465,000. So there's a huge savings here. When we go one-to-one, grades three through five, those are the testing grades. And then we have seven Chromebooks in first and second grade this year for the first time, which we've made very simple for them to log in. They have little badges that they aim at the camera, and it logs them in. It's their like computer driver's license. And they have seven, which is about a third of the classroom, so that they do stations. A third of the class is on a Chromebook, a third are doing reading, a third are working with a teacher, and they rotate. And so that costs about $151,875. So the savings is almost $300,000. So when you add that up, it's almost $470,000, which is enough to rebuy the whole next worth of Chromebooks. It's more than we have available right now, 2090. So I know this is kind of just a broad picture of how this works, but it's just a comparison that we would have spent somewhere in those numbers, maybe over time differently, but we also have far more devices now in our kids' hands. There's more time to use them. They're getting more comfortable using them. They're taking their practice assessments, so they're comfortable with them. There's less instructional downtime. When we used to run kids through labs to give testing, we'd have to make this big schedule. We'd build, we'd take the carts, and we'd set up like other empty classrooms and build labs in there so they could take two classes at a time to do testing, and if anything went wrong, it was really, it'd break into the instructional time. So I thought that was a good way of just showing that over the savings that I feel we have with one-to-one Chromebooks. Since the last time we talked, we implemented a new phone system, and I'm quite proud of this. This is kind of my own little baby. I did this, as Sam said, pretty daringly. I feel like our department should bring value. A lot of districts and a lot of tech departments bring in outside vendors. They, you know, they facilitate it, and they bring in outside vendor to do all the work. We do a lot of this in-house. So we basically bought the phones, bought the software, and built the network. So as you can see, in 2017, the phone bill for the school system was $41,000. The reason there's no 2018, that was the year we implemented, so there was overlap between the both systems, so it was hard to give you a good answer. So I wanted to give you a clean shot of what it cost in 2017 just for the old phone system and a full school year, which was the 1819 year, and it cost us $16,279, a savings of $25,000 in the first year. The project cost was roughly $60,000, probably less. Our return on investment every month is about $1,700, so after 35 months, we'll be paid for it itself. The other part that is interesting to state there is that's also all the phones for the town. We have not fully implemented that, but they're going to basically get the phone system for free, and we'll maintain it, support it, and it's far more features than our other phones had. We have four-digit dialing now between all of our buildings. We have, there was a new law that recently went into effect for 911. We are already in compliance with that. You can dial 911 from any phone. You don't need to dial 9 or any of these other things. So we're already ahead of the curve there. So that one, I'm quite proud of, and, you know, we did that one just in-house. So just a few highlights, and we're almost done. We have this, and then just some town stuff just to share with you. Our E-rate usage, we use over 70% of it over the last three years of our available money, and that's higher than many districts because you have to have that matching dollar. So I thank the board and the town for giving me the funds to use that E-rate. We are at 60% reimbursement, so it only costs us 40% of the total project, so it's very advantageous for us to use it. And one of the projects we did was install the new wireless system three years ago. With over 2,500 devices on wireless plus phones and other things that people have, it's very important we have a robust system, and we do with an Aruba Wireless Network. Every classroom has its own access point, and, you know, I can't think of how much harder it would be if we didn't have this system. The other part that is interesting to state there is, that's also all the phones for the town. We have not fully implemented that, but they're going to basically get the phone system for free, and we'll maintain it, support it, and it's far more features than our other phones had. We have four-digit dialing now between all of our buildings. We have, there was a new law that recently went into effect for 911. We have already, are in compliance with that. You can dial 911 from any phone, you don't need to dial 9 or any of these other things. It's, so we're already ahead of the curve there. So, that one I'm quite proud of, and, you know, we did that one just in-house. So, just a few highlights, and we're almost done. We have this, and then just some town stuff, just to share with you. Our E-rate usage, we use over 70% of it over the last three years of our available money, and that's higher than many districts, because you have to have that matching dollar. So, I thank the board and the town for giving me the funds to use that E-rate. We are at 60% reimbursement, so it only costs us 40% of the, of the total project, so it's very advantageous for us to use it. And one of the projects we did was install the new, a new wireless system three years ago. With over 2,500 devices on wireless, plus phones and other things that people have, it's very important we have a robust system, and we do with an Aruba Wireless Network. Every classroom has its own access point, and, you know, I can't think of how much harder it would be if we didn't have this system. So, that was a huge cost savings, about paid for 50% of about $90,000 project for us. Another thing that we do, save money and really try to keep things working, we rotate multiple computer labs to get the best equipment in place. So, if you remember, last year, we purchased a new computer lab for the STEM lab here at the high school. The reason we did is we get 50% reimbursement from the state for the adult ed, and they use that lab. So, let's buy it a little sooner. We then moved that lab into Dave Gagnard's communication lab. Then we moved Dave Gagnard's lab to Camille Westfall's lab, and upgraded it a little bit, put new hard drives. And then we moved that lab into the typing, or keyboarding, music keyboarding lab. So, one lab upgraded four. So, it took us half a year to do it, but it, but it did get done, and they're quite happy with that. Another thing that we went, that big thing that we did over the last three years was we centralized our copying and printing. I don't know if we've ever talked about this, but we have the ability to badge print, security. We've cut down on tons of waste. I know Becky's daughters will remember going around and collecting a lot of paper at all of the copiers and then recycling it. That doesn't happen anymore, because the job doesn't print out unless you walk up to it and badge the job out. And so, we don't have those piles of paper of things people forgot they printed. The first year, I lowered it a little, I know it was more than $20,000, but I wanted it to be safe. We saved, and that money has been reflected in the budget for the last three or four years of savings, lowering the cost of copying. Next, we've upgraded the, we've updated the PHS security cameras. We added 21 new cameras in that time. We continue to make improvements. We added a new server this year, and we're going to be working on the other schools as well, and hitting a few more locations, try to get as much coverage as possible. The other thing we did was we installed the LCD touchscreens at PHS, which you all know about, but, which I don't know if many people thought about, is if you, we hired a company, and this is another example of what my department will do, they don't like me for this, though, is we installed them ourselves, and it took us about a month, month and a half in the summer of the first year, and we got a little better the second year, but we had to rewire the room and re, because now the projector's up there, we had to then move all the wires to the side, we wanted to rewire the wall, we had to mount them on the wall. Facilities helped us with the mounting, thank goodness, but it, you know, these are 180-pound screens that we put up, and we wanted to make sure that they were done right and looked good as best as possible in the space. So, we do that all ourselves, and the estimated cost per screen is somewhere between $300 to $500 to have an installer come in and do, do the room. So, some definite savings there. Next was, I designed and helped implement all of the technology at Wheeler. Those are things that we've normally, a lot of times, had outside consultants do. The last two projects, we had RAND Associates that did a lot of that. I still did the implementation, but we had designed. We did that in-house, working with Mr. Batchelder, working with ONG, and Ferguson, a lot of that.
Great job.
Thank you. And next, we continue to maintain a high level of uptime, very little interruptions in the network and capabilities. Teachers have a pretty reliable, they go to use their computer and it works, and that's the goal. We don't want to have teachers who don't, that's the same thing with the Chromebooks, that's why we have the loner carts, so when there's instruction, it's instruction. It's not fighting with hardware and fighting with things. We try to do as much as we can to keep that where it is. All right. And then last, just a couple things. I want to talk about shared services. I do like to always get this on camera if I can. We implemented a new CAD system, which the chief was here to talk about how daunting this was. This was a five-year project. We had some ups and downs. This is the computer aided dispatch. This is when every call comes in, a ticket is created, and then it dispatches a person out, and it becomes their record. The fire department also uses it. We started down a path on a grant, it failed, we then had to restart, and we finally implemented. And Dan Demer and a previous technician who's now a police officer, crazy, Joe Simadon, did a lot of the work in that with Officer Demore, so, you know, great job there. We next, we continue to maintain and upgrade all the town computers. One of the things we did this year was upgrade the senior center computers, and I was quite proud of getting that actually pushed through in the capital for them, because the last time they got computers, they bought them with bake sale money. So, I thought that was kind of strange. We have social, we have, you know, social services there, we have all these other people, we have, you know, and we have a very vibrant senior center. I'm, it's amazing. I can't even find a parking spot every time I'm over there. And those guys can play some pool, if you've ever seen. So, so, you know, that was one of the things. And then what we've done as well with the like town library is, all the computers that have either come out of the police department early, and the town and things, we took the best machines we had. We had some decent machines coming out still. We didn't really have a lot of money, they didn't have it budgeted. The library's a little different, because they have a board of their own board of directors and things. So, we had $5,000, and we basically upgraded all of the public machines, all of the child machines, the, all of the circulation machines, and really got them up to speed. They're all ready to go, they're Windows 10, and so they're quite happy with that. We also maintain all the servers. There's no more servers at Town Hall, they're all in the high school, all in the town cluster. So, you see when I purchase things now, there's sometimes a split in the costs. We're trying to make sure that the town is paying their share for servers and storage and some of the licensing, so we try to split that evenly. And, you know, the only thing that's not here is the police, and that's housed at the police department. Another big thing that we did is, and I don't know if many people really know about this, because it really hasn't been talked about at the board, but this is going to be very big. We passed the town-wide fiber project, the board, the town council approved it. This is going to connect all of the town buildings, including like the pool, or at least over towards the pool, and, and, you know, Parks and Rec, and senior center, and all that, but including that is the schools. And we have a 20-year lease on fiber that we, we won a grant for like 16 years ago, so we're getting to the end of it. That was worth like a quarter of a million dollars. This will be in place when that lease runs out, and we won't have to continue the costs. We also have on that, we have a $10,000 a year maintenance charge to it, which will go away. And we're just going to have a line item in the budget between the town and us to any type of upgrades or fixes that will just come out of that budget. So, it should save us money, and it's, it's warranted for 30 years. We next have upgraded and organized all the town infrastructure with new equipment. That includes the police, Town Hall, fire department, senior center, parking rack, roadways. All that equipment came out of the schools, and that's why I thank you again for E-rate funding, because by upgrading our equipment in a timely manner, the equipment that's coming out is still viable, and it allowed us to upgrade all of theirs for, so that the phones and cameras and things like that all work on those networks great. And last, we also support the help desk. There's 15 locations, counting the schools, and we can support every single person from our help desk, which is manned from 7:00 AM to about 4 o'clock. So, people call in, they usually should be able to get someone. So, that's all I have, is highlights, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Well, I just think you should not wait three years to come tell us about this again.
Sorry.
Because obviously, you guys have been a little busy. Any questions, or?
No, I just think it was excellent, Kevin. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, you know, I just want to say that, you know, this department, like several of our departments, most, many of our departments, goes above, over and above, and one of the things that's a little unique about Kevin is he has a education in his blood, and so he, he comes at the technology piece through, with an educational lens. So, I think that makes a big difference for how we deal with our staff, and let our staff know about the technology that we have, as well as how we look at the whole district and everything that you're doing with the town as well. I really appreciate, thank you to you and your whole team.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I will say that, you know, I know I've said that you're the best technology. Individually, you know, whenever I say I'm superintendent in Plainville, oh, you have, you know, you have Kevin Ross, you know, it's like having a Hulk on the Avengers. So, you know, Kevin has a great reputation around the state, and he stayed with us and continues to make our programs better. And there's a lot of small things that may seem small, but it adds up to over time, you know, millions, millions, hundreds of thousands, dollars, million dollars in savings because of, you know, looking at redoing the phone system instead of just blindly paying those phone bills. You know, it's going to be more work for him and his men, but his team, I should say. But he gets it done, he does it well, and then he supports it, and it's like you said, Kevin, I can't think of a time when I had a problem with my computer. Like, it always just works. So, and that's important. So, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, it's my true pleasure to introduce our elementary dream team extraordinaire. We have our three, let's see, we have Lynn Legoye from Toflon principal, Mr. Batchelder from Wheeler, and we have acting principal at Linden, who's doing a tremendous job, Tuana, Tuana Graham Douglas. It's been a long day and a weekend and month. We also, they're also joined by Sue Stoker and Alicia Adarato and Kirsten Penner, who are here to assist and support and tell you about the wonderful things happening in our elementary schools. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting us tonight to talk to you about the elementary schools. We don't have anything quite as fascinating as the fiber network infrastructure, but we're hoping that will hold your attention. So, tonight, this is an ensemble cast, and we are pulling together to tell you all of the things that we want you to know about what's been going on in the elementary schools. And so, the first part is, and we're going to move right along right there, thank you. The first part is, you know, before we do anything, we take a look at the vision and the mission for the school system, and the vision of inspiring and preparing and engaging students is at the center of all that we do. If you take a look at the slide in front of you, I dare say I like, you know, I took, I dared to write on the document there, and I made a few circles. I can erase them, no worries. But we took a look at what we, when we were talking about what we wanted to present to you, what was really important to us was to talk to you tonight about professional learning. So, that's in the red part in the center. So, we want to talk to you a little bit about professional learning, and the learning that we're doing with our teachers in order to shift instruction in the direction that we want to go. And we also talk, are going to tell you a little bit about learning targets and how they align to our instructional core. That is what we want our children to learn. And then in the green, we have, we're going to talk a little bit about a standard-based curriculum, instruction and assessment. You'll hear a lot about standards and how we align our instruction to them. And of course, we always are thinking about how do we know what children learned, and that's our assessments, and so we want to make sure that our assessments are measuring what we want them to measure. And then the last thing that you're going to hear from this, this slide is about interventions. What do we do when children don't learn what it is we want them to learn, and how do we support them so that they do learn it? So, our theory of action, the first one here is about using high-level PLCs, and that's professional learning communities and other collaborative structures to analyze student performance and instructional practices, but also shifting instruction to meet the needs of all students, and that's what we believe if we do, student achievement will increase. Andrew's going to tell you a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Lynn. Good evening, everyone. So, the PLC work ultimately leads to us fulfilling this theory of action led by Mr. Lepage and carried out by building administrators and teachers. Key teacher leaders who have been catalysts for this PLC's achieving stage six have been our math and literacy instructional resource teachers. Each of them is assigned to a grade-level PLC, and they are facilitators. They help the grade-level PLCs arrive at collective commitments, establish agendas, and organize the bullets that you see on this slide, so our PLC time is maximized to the fullest extent. So, key elements for achieving, oh, last year, I should say, we were striving to achieve stage five, and we accomplished that. There are seven stages in this rubric of the, the elements for PLCs, and this year, we're striving for the greater stage, at stage six. And the elements of that are using lesson and student work analysis protocols, videotaping snippets of instruction and student learning, and analyzing results and making adjustment to instruction for students who are struggling, and then for students who are exceeding expectations.
And then our second theory of action is really closely related to the one that you just heard, and we're talking about learning targets, and we are making sure that our learning targets align with the standard-based curriculum, instruction and assessment, and that we engage students in the learning, and we believe when we do that, achievement will increase. So, this is closely related to the PLC and the grade-level teamwork that Andrew just spoke about. We continue working on creating powerful learning targets and designing instruction to meet those high-level targets. And in some instances, we are also including habits of mind or executive functioning skills, such as perseverance, impulse control, organizational skills, and all those other things that parents would love for us to make sure their children have. Next, we're going to hear from Tuana.
Good evening. My job is to talk to you a little bit about how we actualize those theories of action. So, in the name of coherence, the elementary administrators have identified common goals, and these represent our district-wide focus. There is flexibility within the plan for schools to incorporate specific actions relative to their context and the needs of their students. Research indicates that the way to increase student performance is by building teacher capacity to deliver high-quality instruction and providing educators with the time to collaborate, reflect, and share ideas about best practices. Having clearly defined goals allows us to have laser-like focus on what really matters, and that's student learning. And what we know leads to improved performance, increasing teacher effectiveness. The goals enable us to use performance data to design professional development, grade-level meetings, and professional learning communities, or as Lynn mentioned earlier, PLC agendas. I will provide you with an overview, and in a few moments, Sue Stoker, Alicia Adarato, and Kirsten Penner will provide you with more specific details about the literacy and math work occurring here in Plainville Community Schools. Our focus is in three areas, as you can see from the slide, literacy, math, and science. In literacy, having clear expectations for student learning is paramount. When teachers can articulate grade and text-level expectations, they are better able to align instruction, supports, and interventions. In math, being able to identify the major work of the grade illuminates the power standards and foundational mathematical skills and conceptual understanding students must possess to prepare them for more sophisticated math, such as algebraic thinking. Problem-solving represents the application of skills and conceptual understanding and is an important component of preparing students for success in future learning. In the area of science, you may remember our presentation from last year, which shared the shifts in instructional practices of developing models, productive talk, and inquiry-based learning. This year, we have continued our efforts to develop in these areas. Now, following me, Sue, Alicia, and Kirsten will share more about the areas of literacy and math.
So, in the areas of ELI, which Tuana just discussed, our goal is to improve student learning through instruction by incorporating evidence and research-based instructional strategies, concepts, processes, and practices in those three areas that were mentioned on the previous slide, small group instruction, bands of text complexity, and comprehension conversations. We also use Sback and IAB data, along with curriculum assessments and other means to focus our instruction. IABs are interim assessment blocks, they're like practice Sback tests. So, putting that all together, we need to build teacher capacity. So, if we go to the next slide. Literacy success is knowledgeable teachers who use best practices in instruction and assessment in order to positively affect student outcomes. So, building that teacher capacity, there are many ways we've been doing that, and they're listed here, and I'll walk you through them. So, in the area of reading, we've had, been fortunate enough to be able to attend the Connecticut Reading Association Conference. IRT teachers have attended that this year and come away with best practices to share with teachers. In addition, administrators, classroom teachers, and IRTs also had the opportunity to attend the Teachers College Summer Reading Institute at Columbia this past summer, in which we learned about, more about bands of text complexity, comprehension conversations, a lot of things that want to go along with our literacy goals for the district. We also had the opportunity to attend a workshop by Mary Aronworth, and that led to a shift in some instruction by using animated shorts. We love the Pixars. So, using those, it gives access to all students to understand what's going on in the Pixar short without any reading, but yet you're doing reading comprehension. short without any reading, but yet you're doing reading comprehension skills and strategies and having deep conversation about it. So that's been a great addition to our instruction. We also attended the Literacy Leadership Institute, hosted by CAS, in which we were able to listen to Doug Reeves, Tim Shanahan, some big names in education, and discuss some of those key concepts that we've been working on about bands of text complexity, instructional strategies, and so on. We've also done work with Jan Richardson, using her Guided Reading Plan for small group instruction. We've gotten Scholastic Short Reads, which we use for small group instruction as well. So we've, those materials help us fulfill those goals. The district-wide Super Reader Incentive also leads to that goal. We're encouraging that home reading practice of the strategies that kids learn in school. And under Word Study, we've done a lot this year on phonological awareness, district-wide PD for teachers and tutors, also using the resources of Hegarty in the area of phonemic awareness, and then Fundations for Grade Three. It's in place for grades K to 2, and teachers are using that in grade three as well. In the area of writing, we've aligned handwriting with, in kindergarten, with preschool to ease the transition and using that same language, so we've made some adjustments there as well. And in grammar, using patterns of power as a resource to build that teacher capacity for instruction, and we do that through PLCs, which has already been mentioned, and grade-level meetings. And then, lastly, teachers have also been able to attend the Instructional Coaching Institute, which all helps build teacher capacity, and team training as well. So there's a lot going on in the area of literacy to help us achieve those goals. So thank you, and now we'll turn it over to math.
Hello, how are you? Sorry. All right, so here you can see our district math goal and our focus areas for the year. One of these areas is number talks, which a few of you are familiar with, and some of you have even been able to come in and see happening in our classrooms. It's an instructional routine that encourages students to make sense of numbers and break down numbers into smaller, more manageable chunks in order to solve a problem or find a solution. This is our second year of implementation, and teachers have shared that they're noticing students using these strategies more often in their everyday math and even in problem-solving. This year, we've built onto our addition work by adding in subtraction strategies, and we're looking forward to incorporating strategies that focus on multiplication, division, and at some point, fractions. Our other area of focus, as you heard Tawana mention just a few moments ago, is identifying the major works of each grade level. The major work of each grade level are the areas where we spend the bulk of our instructional time with students, and teachers have been working during grade-level meetings and professional learning communities to collaboratively plan and focus their instruction to meet those areas, to really target those. This work has also allowed teachers to develop a shared understanding of the progression of skills and standards from kindergarten through grade five. And then on the next slide, there is a document here, which, although you might not be able to read it very well, is a visual that shows the standards at each grade level. It's an example of the third-grade document, however, documents do exist for every grade-level kindergarten through fifth grade. The standards that you can see here are broken down into major supporting and additional, what they refer to as clusters. And so, any standard that you see here that has a green square are the sta, excuse me, are the standards that are considered the major work of the grade. And so that's really the areas where we really focus in that laser-like way that Tawana mentioned, to make sure that our students can really know and be able to do what's required of them as they leave each grade level and progress on to the next. Additional areas of focus this year included providing professional learning opportunities in the areas of our Connecticut Core Standards, number talks, and problem-solving. In grades three through five, we're continuing to administer and analyze the smarter-balanced interim assessments. Much like literacy, math assessments are also available to use, and we use those to focus our instruction and provide students with practice and exposure to the type of questions that they'll encounter on that assessment. We are working a plan for potential family math nights and incentives, one of which you've heard a lot about from our superintendent, Steve, about the Super Math Challenge, and we'll be taping a new video in the next few weeks to keep the excitement around that initiative going. Can you go back just one? So the last two areas that you'll see here are about math programming. Acadia's Math is a tool that can be used as a universal screen across grade levels. It allows us to gather information and identify any gaps in student understanding, and it can also be used to target specific areas of instruction for all of our students as a part of both our Global Tier One Curriculum and our Intervention Support Systems. Lastly, under the leadership and guidance of Tawana, and with the support of Steve, Dave, Rosa, Lynn, and Andrew, we were able to begin the process of vetting new math programs. And on the next slide, you'll be able to see, so our program review process included the selection of possible new programs, which were then narrowed down based on the criteria you see there. We've been able to schedule some school visits to see the classroom instruction that each program provides in person. One visit took place in Farmington a few months back, and the next is set to take place in Bristol towards the end of this month. As a part of this review process, pilot teams were created. They included Kirsten Penner, myself, two of our instructional resource teachers, one of whom is Sue Stoker, and seven of our classroom teachers across all three of our elementary buildings. Once those lessons were completed, we were able to take some time to gather our teachers back together to survey and gain some feedback. We're in the final stages of evaluating these programs, which will be brought to the Board of Education Subcommittee in the coming months.
They're still thinking of the fiber optic network. All right, thank you very much.
I do have one question. Can't you let you off that easily? I saw the sheet that popped up there that said all, what you're supposed to know in math when you're in third grade, okay? There we go. Thank you so, so fast back there. See, he wants, he wants more credit for his fiber optics. So would, I can't read it because, you know, it's small. Is there anything there that would be valuable? This is terrible. I say this from a very bad math perspective, I guess. Is there, could parents get something out of that so that they would know what their children should know and somehow help to reinforce it, or is that too technical, would you say?
Sure, Lynn, I'm coming up here. There are some documents from the Connecticut Core Standards website that we could potentially pull to help our parents understand it better. This document does a pretty good job of narrowing down, here's the big overarching ideas that students are going to be able, are going to have to know and be able to do by the end of a grade level. It does include things like required fluency, those are things like knowing facts from zero to 10, or knowing multiplication or division facts. That's good information for parents to have, but I think the simple answer is, there are some things we could pull from here, maybe we could clean it up, but that there's also some other documents that already exist that we could potentially share out with parents to make that more simple. Does that answer your question?
Yes, because, you know, I remember way back, like, it seems like it was the Stone Age, but my children were little, and we had a, you know, we did some curriculum nights, and people would go and you could, you know, it was the third-grade night, and it was the fourth-grade night, and you would go, and they would actually show you, you know, all the different areas and what, what your kids would be expected to learn. Now, I have to say, they were, they were better attended than I expected, but still sparsely attended, but it was really nice to be able to see that in black and white. And since that time, way back in the Stone Age, I don't feel like I've seen it again. So that's why I bring it up. Whenever I see something like this, I find that kind of interesting, because I, I think, especially in the area of math, I mean, literacy is literacy. I don't know that there's, there's a lot of changes there, but math is, math is the thing, you know, where people need more support, especially parents. I think my kids outran me when they got to third grade, so.
The Toflon fifth-grade team, I'll let you talk about that.
Just last week, just last week, we did a fifth-grade math night where the teachers presented to the parents, and it was well, well-attended. Of course, we had snacks and things, you know, so.
Feed them.
And we let the kids run around, so they all wanted to come see their friends. But a lot of the comments that came back from parents was that it's not as complicated as they thought, and that when they see it actually in action, math is math is math, and what we're really talking about is more of a conceptual, big-picture, problem-solving, understanding of math. And so, we did a quick thumbs up, thumbs down, how many people prefer this over your, the way you were taught math, and all the thumbs were up. I mean, people see that it really does make sense, and that it's, that it's interesting for children, but it's also, it's applicable right here and now. You're learning how to do something because you're doing a problem that you need to know how to do this in order to solve the problem. So, when Alicia also mentioned in her presentation that they wanted to look at family math nights, that's really what she's, are they getting the hook out? What are they doing behind me? So, no, that was it. So she mentioned that they wanted to look at family math nights, and that's, one of the purposes of those nights is to help parents understand what it is that we are teaching their children. But you're right, not everybody comes, so we will look at finding another way to make sure we disseminate that information to them. Thank you.
And I'll just share, because over the past five years, we've received funding from the Main Street Foundation, and every year, we end up having Family Math Night that we kind of switched over to STEAM Night, and all of those nights are based on the standards. And usually, they're grouped kindergarten through first grade, I mean, kindergarten through second grade, and then three through five. And so, at, at those nights, parents and families play games that are based clearly on the standards, and during the night, they, there is something at each table that kind of identifies what the fogey happens to be, and as Lynn said, families do walk away feeling that they have a better understanding of the math, and it's not as fuzzy as some may have thought it was originally. And just back to this, and I think Alicia said this very well, this type of document is really just used for guidance for curriculum, curriculum design, curriculum writing, and to kind of help teachers determine what is the, you know, where to spend most of their time.
Awesome. So if I came, maybe I could get to fifth-grade level if I were to come up?
Becky, I think we're going to make you sorry you asked this question. Because I'm not chomping at the bit to talk, but I do want to answer, let you know some more information. I know at Wheeler School and all the schools, teachers have apps for homeschool communication with parents, like many teachers at Wheeler have Seesaw. So they'll often, you know, weekly, let parents know what problems they are working on related to these standards and provide specific examples, and often provide specific student work examples for their children, so the parents can see how they're doing things, and even in some cases, where teachers are giving specific feedback on that student to the parents. So it gets them right into the nuts and bolts of what these standards mean.
Right. Thank you.
I do have one question. You did mention that the new math program, you were in the final stages of selecting that. Is there a target for that, implementation of that? And also, is that going to be something, I'm assuming, to augment number talks, or it would totally replace number talks?
So I will be donning my curriculum supervisor hat right now. Yes, so the idea is that after we have the opportunity of sharing the choices and the options with the board, we will make a definitive choice, and that decision will be made within the next few weeks or so. And the program that we are considering has, has a few components in it, and one of which aligns with number talks and has the same learning goals and outcomes and learning expectations, so that is incorporated in that. Is there anything I forgot to add?
Is this part of Common Core? Is this part of the Common Core?
Why, yes, it is. Yes, Common Core.
Is this to improve the Common Core?
So I think, and I, and I do recall, we may have had a conversation about this a few years ago, about some of the misconceptions around the Common Core, the idea that it represents a different kind of math, a new kind of math, when in actuality, it just kind of provides some very clear expectations nationwide. I know that some of the, some of the concern about the Common Core was mainly political, and therefore, it kind of made it really hard for people to see some of the really great things that the Common Core represents in both ELA and math, and in actuality, it was just setting some very clearly defined expectations for each grade level, so that, you know what, a child in Connecticut is expected to learn the same thing as a child in New York, as a child in California, as a child in Texas. And actually, California and Texas were probably really bad states to use as examples, but you understand what I mean. It's, you know, like a nation, a nationwide goal, and if you kind of, I think, one of the things that we found with the Common Core standards is that it kind of simplified. If anyone has been around and looking at curriculum for 20 years or so, you'll realize that some of our previous standards were just so long and so convoluted and so loaded that it was really hard, by the time you finished reading one standard, you could barely remember what you read at the very beginning, and that is for someone that had extremely strong comprehension. So it was very loaded and very, you know, hard to understand. The Common Core represents a simplified way of identifying what students needed to know and be able to do by the end of the grade level.
Have you seen improvements in the math grades during years of the years?
So I think what has happened is, the expectation for student learning is definitely higher, and what we've kind of worked with over the years, one of the things that we did here in Plainville is go forward with the program a few years ago, and what we didn't realize at the time is that, you know, the program wasn't as rigorous as it should have and could have been. So while we know that our students are able to do math at a more sophisticated level than they would have been able to do about 15 years ago, there is still a lot of area for growth. You are welcome. As you can see, we work as a team, and they only gave me one slide because they didn't want me to talk, which is probably very wise, but thank you all so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to compliment our team from the elementary, and I want to thank our, everyone who came out tonight to share the great work that you're doing. I'm really excited about it, and it's, it's, it's very exciting, and it's changed, it's evolved this year, and our work around, it starts with the principal PLC, and it just trickles down to all the work that's happening in, in our individual buildings and our PLCs, and it's led by these wonderful people who presented tonight. So I really, I value and honor their commitment to our kids, and thank you. I'm going to go through a few more updates that I think are really important tonight, that I've been spending a lot of, well, most of my waking hours on, to be, to be truthful. The first one, first one, it's affecting my speech, related to COVID-19 coronavirus. As you know, if you turn on any, any media outlet, you're, this is all you hear about, and it's, it is, it is intimidating and scary in many, in many ways. However, there are some things that, some things to be concerned about and other things to be less concerned about. That being said, I have sent out five communications regarding coronavirus over the last three weeks or so, the latest being this morning, that I know I copied all of you on, and I spent, at 5 o'clock this evening, I was on a conference call where you basically listened to all the state professionals, the governor, and Department of Public Health and Emergency Preparedness, and Department of Education, Commission of Education, Miguel Cardona, among many others from, from the state, just talking about the what-ifs and giving some guidance to super, all the superintendents from around the state who are on the call, most town managers and selectmen and first responders. So it was a very large conference call. So I'll be sending out some more guidance around that. I would say the only, the only things that are significantly different or guidance that I received that should be, you should be made aware of is that the, the governor sent out some guidance to municipal and state, I should say, state employees, not allowing, basically not allowing them to travel outside of state for different workshops, meetings, professional development they were going to go to, and also strongly advising, we're not in a state of emergency yet, and that may happen, when it would be kind of a requirement by the, at the, at the governor's level, but strongly advising that gatherings of 100 people or more do not happen. So just before I came here, I was on the phone with Chris Farrell, there was supposed to be a gathering of 300 tomorrow night for the winter sports awards and banquet here at the high school, and instead of doing it in one big group session in the auditorium, where you're shoulder to shoulder, that's the kind of thing they're talking about, not, not buildings with more than 100 people, but obviously gatherings, sporting events, things like that, where you're indoors in close proximity. They're going to meet, and Mr. Farrell will send out communication, or he probably already has to all his, his coaches and teams, but they're going to meet in their, in their separate team rooms, which will all be smaller than 100 people by quite a bit, with the, the families and do the awards individually rather than collectively, which is, it's unfortunate, but we have to obviously err on the side of safety and caution, and while it's not mandated, it's strongly recommended, and, you know, there was a, there was a, a spread that happened because of a, an event, a school event, actually it was a school trip in another, in another state, that, you know, we're trying to avoid repeating mistakes that have been made other places, so, you know, they're, they're going on their best guidance, and that's what they recommend, so that's what we're going to follow. And I'll send more communications about, I have about four pages of notes from the hour-and-a-half meeting tonight before I came here that I'll share with you. and a half meeting tonight before I came here, that I'll share with you over the days and weeks ahead. And a meeting with our administrative team tomorrow as well. I planned an emergency administrative council meeting at 9:30 tomorrow morning with our entire administrative team to discuss this matter, to plan for, one of the other things that came out of this from the Commissioners of Education is the contingencies of what if we have to cancel school, what are our options, and there are a few options, really. One, if it's two weeks or longer, if it's two weeks, I should say, or less, you'd be expected to make that time up if, you know, the progression of this virus allows for it over June period and over potentially April vacation, that's the requirement at this time by, from the Department of Education. Or if it's, you know, shorter than a two-week period, if it's longer than a two-week period, you'd have to get special permission in order to excuse some of the 180-day mandatory state requirement for days that we must have school. That's a state statute-based requirement, so there'd have to be an exemption or an allowance for that. And that would have to, I believe, go through the legislature for that permission. And then, the other option is to request a waiver and to offer some home distance learning options. I've already spoken with Kevin in our central office cabinet last week about some potential options. We have really great technology. You know, some of the areas of concern involve whether or not students have, you know, Wi-Fi in their home that they have access to, so we have to look, we have to be careful to ensure equity of access. So if there isn't Wi-Fi, we have to be able to provide some hard copies perhaps at the schools they could come and pick up. There's also talk about students who don't have food at home and have free and reduced lunch, about still being able to provide options like we do with summer meals to perhaps pick up food. So there are a lot of variables and factors to consider if we were to keep students home for distance learning. We're not at that stage yet, and I hope we don't get there, but if we do, there are, we're starting more intensive planning tomorrow with our team, and I'll work with, of course, the unions around contractual, you know, restrictions and allowances, and what constitutes a workday, you know, can you be in your pajamas and grading papers on Google Classroom, you know, things of that nature that the whole state is facing, and the country for that matter. So it's a complex issue. I've spent a lot of time talking with colleagues and representatives from the state about it, and it's a very big issue to deal with, but we'll get through it, we'll, one day at a time, sometimes one hour at a time as things change, and I'll keep everyone, including families and Board of Education, updated as I have been doing, and students, because I know it impacts them significantly as well. I do want to follow up on, so that's the first heavy item of the night, I do want to follow up on, you know, the public comment and town manager Lee being here tonight, as well as members of the town council, and I know, I appreciate Chair Tyrell thanking them for doing so. Since Friday morning, when I first learned of this parental, very serious and disturbing parent-related situation, you know, which Mr. Lee read the statement from the police report, I've been meeting with the police, I was here on Saturday, meeting with the chief of police and Mr. Lee, and planning our response, really cautious not to create undue alarm and concern with the entire community, if some people, most of the community is not impacted, but obviously, many members are, and they were here, some were here tonight. So I just want to thank Mr. Lee and the town council, and Chief Coutaneau is absolutely outstanding, and I've been working closely with Lieutenant Mullins, and Sergeant Roper, and Detective Rodriguez, and Officer SRO Martins, and so, and just the entire police force, I have great respect for the work they do. It's very, very heavy, it's very sad, and it's disturbing, and while it's still allegations and charges, that have to be, have to go through a process, and my heart goes out to families that are impacted and affected, and I treat our kids like they're mine, so it's been a heavy load to bear, but we will take it one step at a time and work through the process together as far as identifying the police, letting the police do their work, identifying, notifying those impacted, and moving forward. And so I will share more on that as we go forward, but I just wanted to give you an update and to thank the town manager for his collaboration and the whole, the town council for their support, and the police for being tremendous. On a much lighter note, and a more positive note, I know Kevin had alluded to this in his presentation, and Foster was there, and Mr. Levanduski spent quite a bit of time there as well, and I was fortunate to be an inspector of the robots at the VEX Robotics Championships on Saturday. Our middle school hosted the state, and Mr. Guarino, of course, was there and said a few words in the opening, who was very nice. Just really proud of our middle school, and Camille Westfall, and Laurel Schwartz, and everyone involved with the program, but Camille's, you know, kind of the state icon for VEX Robotics, does a tremendous job. The community coming together, the families, the success of our four teams that made the finals that day. I know Val and Jules were the, you know, the kind of the shining, the team that does incredibly well, and they tied the state record in their first match, and then it had some mishaps with some of the other partnerships, alliances that were formed, and so it's just the luck of the draw, they didn't make the worlds, they missed it by a little bit, but just tremendous, and just the supportive environment, so I want to congratulate our middle school on hosting that great event. From there, I went to the cheerleading state competition down at Hill House in New Haven, really proud of our cheerleaders, and I was standing with Mr. Farrell, watching the performance, and, you know, I had watched quite a few of them before our team came up, and, you know, I'm glad I'm not a judge, because, well, they would have won, of course, but maybe I wish I was a judge, but they did come in second in the state for the coed cheer competition, and I'll tell you, you have to be a tremendous athlete, they were all doing backflips and triple, I don't know what they're doing, it was like a gymnastics match mixed with cheer, it's just incredible the talent that our team has and our coaches, so I want to congratulate them, and I know they're disappointed, and they were upset by getting second because they were unbelievable, but, you know, onward and upward, they have another competition, I can't remember the name of that, to qualify for New England's, which I'm sure they will do, and I wish them the very best, but very proud of our cheerleaders. And finally, I want to formally acknowledge our Board of Education, all of you, and I know Mr. Davenport left to join that meeting, and being a Board of Education member is not an easy task, especially in times like this, when we're all tested. It can be a thankless job, it can be a very difficult job, it's an unpaid volunteer job that requires a lot of hours and a lot of dedication. I want to thank all of our students and our schools that made these wonderful gifts, and baked goods and ceramics, and I like the saying here, "Thank you for your commitment, investment, encouragement, and involvement."
Do you think there's a "mint" in there?
And enjoyment, so they want you to enjoy, so I think there's some breath mints in there, amongst other things, from Linden, and the wonderful things from using our, using 3D printers at the middle school, and I know there's gifts from all the students. So, thank you to our board members. I just wanted to read something quickly, I was on Cabe, just looking at, trying to capture what a board member does, and I'm gonna read this from Cabe, just bear with me. "The essential attributes of a good school board member. School boards exercise their authority at board meetings. The effective school board member should exhibit a strong commitment to working with others on the board toward the common goal of providing the best possible education for the children in the community. There are certain skills and attributes which are consistently present in successful Board of Education members," and there's a little list. "Good board members: Keep children first; Maintain high standards of conduct; Accept criticism; Treat all individuals with respect; Maintain channels of communication; Focus on important issues; Demonstrate critical thinking skills; Maintain a sense of humor, you need that when you work with me; Believe in public schools; Strive to reach consensus on difficult issues; Work out interpersonal conflicts appropriately; Manage stress in stressful situations; Take responsibility for actions; Are honest and sincere; Value and seek challenges; Get the information necessary to make good decisions; And above all, have the capacity to learn and grow as they recognize the scope of the responsibilities of service on a local Board of Education. It's important to remember that decision-making authority is vested in the Board of Education, not in the individual members, therefore, it's essential that members of the Board of Education be able to work together well to achieve these goals." And I'm proud to say that our Board of Education has done a very good job of that, whether it's in development of the budget or any issues that you face, so I just want to thank you. Sometimes it's an unpaid, I came up with this myself, it's an unpaid all-you-can-eat buffet of stress at times, but it's also a wonderful position that allows you to, the power to positively impact the lives of so many students, families, and staff. So I thank all of you for your collective and individual commitment to the Plainville Board of Education. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to our board subcommittee reports, and waiting down there at the end of the table, Ally Shambrello, quietly, just sitting there being so nice. Ally, what would you like to tell us about the high school?
Actually, before my report, I was wondering if I could ask a question to Mr. Whitpage about if there was a school shutdown?
Sure.
What would happen if those were on AP exams? Would we be allowed to take them at another school? Would we miss them? And was it crowded?
That's a good question. So smart.
Four, so I'm a little nervous.
So, that's a really good question, and that's one that didn't come up today, but I did see guidance on that. I will get that to you and to all the AP, I'll get it to Mr. Johnson to share with all the AP students.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's a stumper. I hope that doesn't, that's typically in May, we have about the first two, three weeks of May, so I'm hopeful that it won't impact us, but we're not the only town that's dealing with that, and the good thing about AP is that it's nationwide, and there are many towns and communities who are affected by it, so I will have that answer for you very soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, great question.
Okay, so for my report, the theater club this weekend put on a great performance of their play Haunted Cabin on last Friday and Sunday. Some of my friends are in theater club, and I heard it was incredible. And now that the weather is starting to get warmer, spring sports are starting up, and winter sports are officially ending tomorrow with the Winter Athletes Award banquet tomorrow night. And this weekend, the jazz band is performing at UConn's Jazz Festival on Friday, and then heading up straight to New University of New Hampshire to perform the next day at their Jazz Festival for our Weekend of Jazz. And then tomorrow night, or not tomorrow, Wednesday will be the parent-teacher conferences, and on March 26, Project R will be sponsoring Mr. PHS for, I don't even know how many years it's been now, it's been so many, to support the senior class, so I hope everybody goes. And then that's it for my report.
Thank you very much, Ally. Were you gonna say something?
No, no.
He keeps pressing, he's like in a safe space.
I'm just thinking, I know I'm gonna have to provide some guidance on large events that include over 100 people, so I'm just, as you were reading all these upcoming events, I was kind of cringing in my seat, so, stay tuned.
Can we provide chairs so everybody sits six feet apart from each other? That's, six feet is supposed to be the safe space.
Let me see what we can do. I should have left my microphone off.
So we have facilities and finance, I know we have not had a meeting, and we also have not had a policy meeting, we have not had a curriculum meeting, and we have not had outreach, so, but we will soon. It sounds like we need a curriculum meeting pretty soon. We'll probably be talking about math. So that leads us down to the high school pack. Mr. White?
Yeah. That's not working, but anyway. The high school pack meeting is this Wednesday night on the 11th. The high school pack also is having their annual, I've started it already, their annual butter braid sale that raises money for scholarships and all part of the pack's activities. And so I know that this has been a prominent desire among some of the board members to order, which is definitely not good for your diet, but awful good to taste, so I do have the order forms here, so if anybody is interested after the meeting tonight, you can let me know what you would like to purchase, and I'll get this into the pack on Wednesday night.
Thank you so much. Tofflon report, Ms. Martinez?
There is no report as of yet, the PTO will be meeting this Thursday on the 12th at 7:00.
Thank you. Ms. Wells, you have a report from Linden?
Yes, so the last meeting was on February 12th. Right now, there's a Yankee Candle fundraiser going on on March 2nd, a catalog went home to all the Linden families. Everything's shipped direct for free, so out-of-town friends and families can now get into the act and help support the Linden Street School. On Thursday, March 19th at 6:00 PM is the Lucky Lepcon Bingo, and Saturday, April 4th is Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. You can learn more about that at the next PTO meeting, that's this Wednesday, March 11th at 6:00 PM, or they have their first supplemental PTO meeting happening this Wednesday, March 11th at 11:00 AM, which is going to take place in room 108 at the Linden Street School.
That leads us to the middle school, Ms. St. Lawrence?
They didn't have a traditional meeting in February, they did meet on February 11th, and we put together flowers for their carnation sale for Valentine's Day, which was very successful. They meet again tomorrow evening at 7:00.
And Wheeler, Ms. Paul Mary?
Their last meeting was canceled, they meet next Thursday.
Okay. The Craig Council report, I did attend the Craig Council meeting because it directly followed the legislative breakfast that we had a couple of weeks ago. There was not much on the agenda because it directly followed the legislative breakfast that we had, so, not much to report. So as far as the chairperson's report, I'd just like to remind everyone, we have Day on the Hill on March 11th. And also to mention the Wheeler, right? March 11th, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, you gave me a funny look, I was like, uh-oh, probably, you went out the wrong date here or something. Okay. I wanted to mention that many of us attended the Wheeler Open House, was really a nice event, well-attended by the community. I just heard so many positive remarks there about people really pleased with what the building looked like, and the kids were excited about showing their building off, and I don't think there could have, I just really think it was a great event, and it's the kind of thing that, I already was plugging, you know, the middle school, okay, because I said, can't leave this, you can't leave this, you know, alone, we have to remember that we have the middle school waiting. And when people see the kind of work that's done by the town and the district and the Capitol Projects Building Committee, it helps to them have faith in, you know, another project that will be coming down the road, so, really appreciated that event and the work that went into it. Now, Mr., did Mr. Batchelder take off on me? All right, well, see, I was gonna thank him, but that's okay. Oh, too bad. The budget process, as we all know, is continuing on, and we will be meeting with the council in our work session on Thursday, is that what it is?
Wednesday.
Wednesday's our work session. And so then, you know, the budget will keep going on from there, and we ask anybody who would like to write a letter to the council, because we had a public hearing, we got some good support at the public hearing, but if you want to write a letter to the council and send it to them, and tell them that you, how you feel about the budget in general, one way or another, I would like you to say you support the Board of Education budget, but that's always a good thing. Like to thank everyone for the Board of Education appreciation gifts, especially this little monster here, which we all received, the little, I think it's a Tofflon monster, actually, very cute. I have quite a collection of those over the last 19 years, I will tell you, could probably fill a room with them. And so, the legislative breakfast that we had, I'm going right back to that, I thought was fairly well-attended, and kind of a productive, a little more productive than we've had in the past, where we just kind of go back and forth. There were actually some presentation of things that, through regional cooperation, are positive things that have been happening, positive things that can be pointed to and say, you know, if we are funded to do these things, we can actually be smarter with the way we spend our dollars. So I have some decent hopes about the way in which that's moving forward. And, let me see, is there anything else? I think that might be it. I think that's it, on me. So that leaves us to unfinished business, which I don't think we have any of. And, I can't get my little thing to move. It won't go, but our chairperson's report's like the end of the meeting. So unfinished business, we don't have any new business, board open forum. Anybody have?
Just one thing I would like to add about the VEX Robotics State Championship, because that event did involve more than 130 matches just on the middle school level, and 90 matches on the elementary level, but it on the elementary level. But in addition to that, one thing that was new that was added this year that I thought was very exciting, was the, some of the teams actually were challenged to do a video of no more than four minutes stating how robotics can relate directly to STEM projects. And I was fortunate enough to be one of four people who was asked to judge these. And we saw some amazing creativity, really good examples of research from middle school students throughout the state. And there was also a group that were done by elementary students. This is another aspect of robotics and VEX Robotics, which I think is really exciting, hopefully will lead to a, really a regeneration of robotics back at Plainville High School, which I think is really important, virtually supports the STEM activities of our students. And so that, I think we really need to have a really good shout out to both Camille Westfall and to Laurel Schwartz for getting this done and, and the extra effort they put in. They were there, I don't know how early. I got there at 7:30 in the morning, and the place was set up and done. And I drove by there about 5:00 o'clock, and there were still people in the building. This, this just speaks well for all of our teachers and our administrators in the whole district to put on an event like this. I think it was just outstanding.
Anyone else? Okay. That brings us to our quarterly special education report. I know we are without Mr. Adlerstein. Mr. Levanduski is looking so sad over there by himself.
I can, I can share that you did receive a copy of the special education.
Special education report.
Report. And I told Sam I would, his sons are on vacation, so he's, he wanted to take some time with his children, so I didn't want to stop that. So I can handle this. So I just want to say that there's an increase in district staff expenditures related to keeping students in district that's a little bit higher than anticipated by about $72,000. This number is included in the forecast to the end of the year, and we remain hopeful that we'll end up closing that gap and having a balanced special education cost budget, all things considered, by the end of June. So I know there's a lot of numbers there, and they're always in flux, depending on students coming and going. And, and, you know, reducing our outplacements, as we've done, overall, has increased our in-district costs for paraprofessional support that we need in order to help those students be successful. And Vicki does a great job, as does Leanne, of course, of really managing those costs and doing what's best for kids at all times.
I have a question. We do have an increase of two on the outplacements?
Yes.
Is that permanent, or is that temporary? That's, I know it's hard to...
It's kind of hard to say.
Well, I assume you just moved into town?
Right.
Have a variety of outplacement, how they're just doing.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of those variables.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's one of those variables. You move into town and it's an outplacement. So, you know, a lot of times, DCF placements and, and those things that you can't control. So, but overall, I would say that we're forecasting, you know, a little higher than we wanted to at this point, but it does change. And Vicki does a great job of keeping a close eye on that with Sam.
We do not have a turf report yet. We are, we do have a request for approval to extend the maintenance, the lease and maintenance agreement for the district copiers. Can we get a motion on that?
Madam Chairman, I would request, make a motion that we request and approve a, the request for a bid waiver to extend the lease on maintenance agreements for the district copiers.
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any, is there any, any additional information we want to give on that? Or is there any?
I could just tell you that it's at a cost saving, so that it's a reduced cost for the same or better level of service. And Kevin always does, that's another one of his areas he oversees. So all things considered, it's a, it's a reduction in the cost for the same or better, better machines, the same, right, Kevin? Is that, did I say that?
It's just, I don't know, four years is up.
Yeah, you can.
He's got, he's got to come up.
Good, you can talk about this one.
He's got to come up to the microphone. We sometimes get away without it, but he's got to come to the microphone.
Sam would know better. I spoke with him, but basically, the consortium that has done this copier contract has been so happy with the company, Office Works out of Plainville, that they wanted to basically extend it another four years, getting, renewing all our devices. And there'll be a slight increase in costs that they're still negotiating for the, per page, but the cost for the overall machines is actually coming down. They're always trying to right-size it a little better. So if they look at a copier that's not doing a whole lot of copies, or as many as you would think as the machine was there, they make it a little bit slower, a little smaller model. And that saves us some money. If that doesn't work, the good thing is every four years, if they increase, we adjust it again. So in general, it's been very successful. I've been really happy with Office Works. They're in the industrial park. And, you know, this is like our, it's our second vendor and third or fourth contract that I've been involved with. And they've had the best service that I've had. So, and there's about eight districts, I think, using this. And then there's others that piggybacked on it. So it's been pretty good.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Unless there's anything that anyone would like to remove, we can call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. And now adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn from Ms. Paul Mary? And a second? Foster, you have the second, okay. And a second by Mr. White. Otherwise, we're going to be here all night, guys. All in favor of adjournment? All right. Thank you all very much for coming out. Appreciate everyone's efforts tonight. Thank you.